Good evening, everyone. This is an informational meeting here at the City Council Chambers of April 10th, 2014. We're here to discuss the Winterbav Emergency Sewer Water and Everything Else Project. So we have here John Dougherty from CDM Smith. Do you want to go first, Mr. Mayor? I think we'll hear from the mayor first. Mayor Izzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of the council, Council Pat, Penta, and Powers, thank you for being here. I know we were here about two and a half weeks ago to update you on the progress of the Winterbav infrastructure work that's been going on now, I want to say, for close to six or seven months. We did not anticipate this length of time, but unfortunately, when you're dealing with a project as complex as this, things come up that are beyond the control, certainly beyond the control of the city and, in this case, beyond the control of our engineering firm, CDM Smith. We were all set. Work was done, very, very complex. I don't want to go through all the different agencies that were involved with respect to permitting and planning and so on, but it was very, very complex. Took us a little bit longer. And, you know, I think it's worth noting that one of the reasons, you know, sometimes, you know, you hear people say, "Well, geez, you know, you got the engineers. Why didn't they know this? Why didn't they know that?" You know, this started off as an emergency repair, and so unlike just something that we're planning for, right, that we're putting out to design and now getting ready to put out an RFP and do work like we would normally do, this was on an emergency basis. So we really did not know. I mean, you know, so right along, we've been trying to give the public the best information that we have, and we continue to do that even up until two and a half weeks ago. We had planned by the beginning of April, April 1st, to have this all wrapped up, the street work done, sidewalks done, people go back on with their lives and not have to detour around Winterbav. I know we get, you know, complaints quite a bit from residents in those neighborhoods down, you know, from Library Street, Soul Street, all the way up to Winterbav, and they've had to bear the brunt of this, really, with the increased traffic and MBTA and all the other entities that have had to use their streets and neighborhoods now for the last six or seven months. So believe me, my apologies to them and my thanks, you know, for their patience, but we have run into one last little snag. We don't anticipate it to be too much longer, but it has to do with public health, which, I mean, from the very beginning, this has had to do with public health, when you're talking about sewage and drinking water. So one of the things that we have to do, that we have to be sure of before we button everything up and repave the street and the sidewalks, is that the drinking water is safe, obviously, for human consumption. And the chlorination test that's been done with respect to the MWRA line has not been adequate. And they continue, the MWRA and the city and our engineers continue to work on getting it to a point where it passes the test, where the water will now be safe for human consumption. And actually, we like it more than just safe. We want it to be, you know, perfect. So we're not quite there yet. And as a result of the way that the water needs to be tested, and John Dougherty is here from CDM Smith, he can elaborate or answer questions better than I could, but I just want you to know that, you know, this is not something that we hoped for or anticipated. We hope that the test, you know, is done and satisfactory the first time, but in this case, it wasn't the case. So it's going to push it off another couple of weeks, and I think it was the feeling amongst members of the council that you wanted to have a meeting to inform the public, particularly in that area, but also people that use Winterbav all the time, to get to, whether it's 1A or Route 16, that it is going to be a little while longer. And we're going just as quickly as we can, but we always want to keep the safety of our residents as paramount. So with that, if it's okay with the members of the council, I'll turn it over to John Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to come here tonight to provide an update to the council on what's been going on down at Winterbav and specifically why we're not done now. We were here about two and a half weeks ago on a Monday night. We talked a bit, and at that time, we said that we'd be finished with the work before the Little League season started, which I believe was supposed to start today. And just two days after we were here, a report came back from the field that the chlorination test of the 24-inch MWRA transmission line did not pass. And so what that meant is they had already pressure-tested the line, they had chlorinated it, they let it sit 24 hours, and they go back and measure the chlorine, you know, amount of chlorine left again. And when it didn't pass it, the MWRA said, "Hey, you guys have to chlorinate it again." Takes a little time, they drain the line back down, flush it out, fill it again with a good dose of chlorine, let it sit again. Well, unfortunately, the second time, it also did not pass. At that point, I believe Bob Button reached out to the City Council and said, "You know, we better get on the agenda and get in front of you to explain why they're not done," because it was clear that they weren't going to be done by this week. So where we stand now is they met with the authority last week. They said, "Hey, we've tested this twice. It hasn't passed. What do you want to do?" And the reason the authority, the MWRA, is such a part of this is that under the City of Revere project, we replaced 265 feet of water main with brand-new water main. Well, the MWRA transmission main that has to be pressure-tested and chlorinated is 4,000 feet long. So the location of the valves that shut down that MWRA line are near the police station down on Winterbav, and the other one is up at the intersection of Broadway and Winterbav. So when those are where the shut-off points are for the MWRA's connection to their transmission system, so we put our 265 feet of brand-new pipe in, pressure-test everything, put it back together. You go to chlorinate, you got to chlorinate the whole 4,000 feet. Did it once, didn't work. Should have worked, but it didn't. Did it the second time, it didn't work. So now, you know, we're wondering whether, okay, is it our 265 feet that won't pass or is it the greater line? So we, you know, we talked to the MWRA, they agreed, they said, "Okay, let's isolate each section." So we took and we've isolated our 265 feet, isolated 1,700 feet running towards the police station, isolated 2,100 feet running towards Broadway, and each of those lines is now being superchlorinated and will be tested again individually. And we're hoping that, and they've chlorinated some of the lines now, they're going to be testing one of them, I believe, tomorrow. If it passes, they'll start approving each section of line. Hopefully, all three sections will pass this time, but if they don't, they'll have isolated where the problem is. Is it in a stretch of the older MWRA pipes or is it in the 265 feet we put in? But, you know, on normal city water mains throughout the city, you might have valves every intersection, every three or four or 500 feet. On these much larger transmission mains that are carrying water from the MWRA up to the North Shore or spread to different communities, the valves are often very, very far apart. So that's where we are on the 24-inch line, and it isn't as quick as that line passes we're done. The fact that, you know, once we finish the 24, we still have to take the 16-inch line off the sidewalk, put 265 feet of that in the ground, connect that to the 16-inch MWRA transmission line, and then where the valves are on that line is about 2,000 feet apart. So they're not, it's not as long, but they're still 2,000 feet apart. So we install 265 feet of 16-inch pipe, test that whole line, hopefully, we do not have the same issues that we're having now, and then once that's done, they can do the paving and clean up the sidewalk. So at this point, we're looking at three to four weeks, and, you know, our plan would be to come back and update the City Council on where things stand, either on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis, as you see fit. On a regular, you know, the sewer line has been repaired, the pumps are gone, the DPW staff's not out there on overtime basis, the police department is still there, the street is still closed, the MWRA has an inspector out there every day, working with us, coordinating with us, the city engineer visits the site at least once a day, and we're doing everything in our power to, you know, to get this resolved and restore the line, but that's where we are. So it's really, you know, coordinating with the MWRA, and it is literally a public health issue. Doesn't affect the city water mains where people are drinking and all. This is restoring the MWRA's transmission line that happens to pass through the city of Revere. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to call on the Ward Council first. Council Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, through you, and I'm going to first say bluntly, I'm not happy about this. I mean, you people, world-known engineers, renowned engineers, you came in front of us with a project that was difficult from the beginning, and you said that. Now, not to know that this line had to be tested, doesn't sound right. No matter where it falls, if it's our line, now, what I don't understand is, you isolate, you find out where the problem is. Does that pipe have to be dug up again?
I can't answer that question until they identify the problem. If there is a problem...
How long does it take to test a water line with chlorine? I mean, 72 hours, 48 hours?
What they do is they drain the line, they fill it with a, what we call, superchlorinated water, a very, very high dose of chlorine, they let it sit 24 hours, they take some samples, and they look for there to still be a certain amount of chlorine in the line, and if that's the case, they know that all the chlorine has not been eaten up or, you know, or taken up, and there is some residual. Much like if you owned a swimming pool, you would occasionally chlorinate your swimming pool to make sure there was no germs or bacteria. It's the same with drinking water, and so they, it's pretty much a 24-hour cycle now. If it passes the test, they drain the rest of the water out and they restore that pipe to...
But the line you have on top of the ground right now over there, that's a water line, correct? Temporary water line?
Correct, 16-inch water main.
And that's there because of the permanent water line, there's something possibly wrong with it?
The 16, for us to do the sewer repair, we were required to shut down the two MWRA transmission mains, a 16 and a 24, and the MWRA said, "We will shut those down for you if you provide a 16-inch line so that we continue to have an active transmission main down Winterbav." So the 16-inch line on the sidewalk is and was always intended to be a temporary bypass to...
But you're talking another three to four weeks of overtime around the clock for the police officers. We're told in September this will be done and things, because I can feel the frustration of the people down there.
Council, we were here in October at a public meeting, and I was the person at the public meeting, and at that meeting, we said that we were going to try to be done by Christmas or New Year's.
Well, I thought it was Thanksgiving, I was told, and then before the frost lines come and everything else. But what I'm saying is, you know, took a job on, I mean, in other words, they just did the summer tunnel over and they get penalized every day. Thank God that we didn't have that on there, because actually, we should have, probably no taxes to the city. But all I'm saying is, the frustration is, you hire somebody to do something, they come in and then it's, "Let's go to the council, explain what we're doing here, because this didn't work, we're going to do something else." You know, and this meeting here is not informing the people. I don't know what percentage is watching it tonight. I know it's very simple, you can ride by there and see it's closed, and common sense will tell you, "Yeah, the project's not done." And they're riding by and probably saying, "Well, somebody doesn't know what they're doing."
I understand.
You know, and to the mayor's credit and everything else, he's been trying, it was an emergency situation. He's not the engineer. He's hired you people. I know you've been here for a while, and sometimes people take things for granted when they're there for a while, and I hope that's not the case, that you just feel that, you know, you may have known this back a month ago, that this stuff, you knew this had to be done, you knew it had to be tested.
Correct.
And there's always a possibility, when you test something, it could go wrong. That was the time you should have said, "Well, hope and target date, April 9th, if anything, everything goes right." If something goes wrong, this is going to, the people would have known it then. I'm just saying, there's things that we do in this project that it just seems like it's one thing after another that we could have took care of. We just put all the stuff on the table at the beginning, and every possible thing go wrong. You know, I mean, you do jobs, and I'm a firm believer in telling people on a date when it gets done, but I understand this is a tough one, and it's a tough call. You might not have took the job on. Firm believer in telling people, "Look, you pick a project, pick a date to get done. If you don't, you know, usually don't hire that person back again, honestly, or, you know, you have a penalty." But it's like, you know, we just come up here, we just take it because we have to take it, there's nothing else we can do. But I'm going to be one person to say that I'm not happy at all the way this job has went. I'll be the first one to say that. And I hope everything goes right, and I hope it's three or four more weeks, and it's not that you're going to dig this pipe up and start all over again. Now, the water line, for example, that you put in, we were back here in October, the water line was going to move to the other side of the street, correct? Back then?
Potentially, maybe.
This water line basically was just put back in the ground?
Correct.
On the same side?
Correct.
So is it a new water line or not a new water line, that whole line?
There's 265 feet of new water main above the location where the sewer needed to be replaced.
So there's a brand-new pipe here at 2,000 feet?
Excuse me?
It's 2,000 feet, you said?
No, 265 feet.
265 feet.
Right. The new section of pipe is 265 feet, the additional 3,800 feet is the older MWRA transmission main.
But all right, just let me get this clear, because I don't want to come back here and explain it to people again. Let's say you test your line, and your line is fine. That doesn't mean this is resolved, correct?
Correct.
Because we still have to solve all, where the problem is.
We would still continue to work with the MWRA. At that point, we would certainly have conversations with the MWRA about whether it was their responsibility because the problem is in their section of pipe or not. But that's, what we've done is, when they failed the first test, we were working closely with the MWRA, they said, "All right, well, let's do the test again," because that was the most efficient way to do it. When it failed the second time, we went back to the authority and basically said, "Hey, we've got 265 feet of brand-new pipe, it's still not passing, you want to talk about why?" And at that point, they said, "Well, isolate each section." Took some, took a few days to do that, to isolate each section, so now we have an old section, a new section in the middle, and another old section of MWRA pipe, and now each of those pipes are going to be tested separately, and we will have the answers in a couple of weeks.
I'll ask one, one last question. When you do have the final answer, and let's say it is the new pipe, let's just say that for argument's sake. What does it recourse now? The city pay more money to do something that wasn't done right?
That would be a question between us and the city and the contractor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Penta. Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. John, correct me if I'm wrong, the temporary pipe now is carrying water from MWRA Point A to their Point B, is that correct?
Correct. It's carrying temporary water around the construction site.
Okay. How have we determined that the water was not satisfactory up to code, health code?
Though, when they, so the same, a similar process took place when the 16-inch line was installed. So when the work started on the site, for us to be able to access the sewer that was very deep below the water mains required us to shut down the 16-inch MWRA water main, dig down in the street on either side of the sewer collapse, connect the 16-inch pipe up on the sidewalk, and reconnect that stretch of 16-inch water main so that the MWRA would have a line in service out there. The line was then tested and put back into service, and we didn't have any of the problems we're encountering today.
Now, are there any spurs running off of that main line?
No, there are not.
Into any of the neighborhoods? It's just a transmission line for water from one point to another, is that correct?
Correct. That's a transmission line for the MWRA that runs down Winterbav, and I believe the 16-inch pipe actually turns left, as you're heading towards downtown Revere, I believe that 16-inch line actually turns left on Beach Street and continues down to the intersection of Broadway and continues through up Fennel Street. But the city of Revere has a half a dozen or more MWRA transmission lines that pass through the city and that have been there for, you know, many, many, many years. And off of, off of some of those lines is where the city gets its water supply. An example would be is, there is a location down on Revere H Parkway towards the police station where there are at least three different MWRA lines, sorry, not Revere H Parkway, there's three different MWRA lines in that stretch of Winterbav, and at one of those locations, there is a large tap and a meter that lets water go into the city. But there, and I believe there are at least a couple of other locations like that in the city. But in the case, on our specific case, the 16-inch pipe up on the sidewalk is allowing MWRA water to continue on what would be its normal path.
Yeah. I want to make one thing perfectly clear this evening. I'm not blaming the mayor for this. He's a layperson like myself and my 10 colleagues here. And, you know, John, your company has been doing business in this city, an awful lot of contracts over a period of years. And I tell you, I'm somewhat troubled when I hear that we're going to be paying extra monies to police, not that they aren't earning it, they are, but something like this really shouldn't be happening. I mean, we right, this, we right now are so cash-strapped in this city with regard, we can't even repair potholes or trenches that are our responsibility, and we're paying extra overtime out there because of something that wasn't calculated properly, and that's my, I have the same opinion as Council Penta. Something went wrong here. Something was not estimated properly, and as a result, the ratepayers in this city, in all probability, are going to wind up paying for it. I would suggest to you that you have more than conversations with the MWRA when all, and if it's found to be their responsibility with regard to the problems with this water, because the city can't afford it. We can't afford to be paying this extra money. Maybe your company should turn around and say, "Hey, look, we'll share the burden with you, we'll share the cost with the ratepayers in the city of Revere, because we've done very well, but the ratepayers in the city of Revere." Maybe that's something you should, I understand it's not your decision, but maybe it's something you should take back to your CEO and to all of your other members over there of your company, that people in Revere are tired of it. We're tired of paying for mistakes. And again, I'm not blaming the mayor. He's a layperson like we are. He hears the same thing. But I would suggest you do that, sir, because I'm going to be very, very skeptical on voting for any more bond authorizations for this thing to go on, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Redden.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, as I understand it, we have a problem with one or more of three separate sections of water pipe, correct?
Correct.
Two of them belong to the MWRA, and one of them belongs to us, it's in a brand-new 260-foot section of water, correct?
At the end of the day, that line belongs to the MWRA, but it's the new section we put in.
We put in, all right. So here's my question for you. What, A, is the likelihood that what is now running through the jump line coming from the potentially problematic section up, I guess, further up the line on, towards the police station, is that where the water's flowing from?
The 16-inch line that is on the sidewalk?
Yep.
Is a completely separate line?
I understand. That's the jump line, you jumped around it.
It's not at all, it's not in any way connected?
Right.
To the 24-inch line?
It's not connected to any of that water system that is feeding that our brand-new 16-inch line?
It's not, correct. It's not connected at all to the 24-inch line.
So we have no problem with the quality of the water in that line right now as, vis-a-vis, this issue that we're dealing with below?
Absolutely. And there's absolutely no problem, there's no problem with any of the water the city is using or any of the water the MWRA is using anywhere at all. This 24-inch line that is being chlorinated and tested is completely isolated at both ends.
I think that's important for people to know, that there's no, we're not talking about an issue of currently, potentially currently contaminated water.
Correct.
But let me go back to what existed prior to the time we had to put that jump line in. Is it possible that this issue was existent prior to the time we had this problem and, you know, and had to jump the line out? Is it possible that there was already contaminated water?
No, because the, before the work began, there would have been, on Winterbav, there would have been a 24-inch pipe, there was an MWRA transmission line that was working fine. The MWRA tests their water regularly, and the 16-inch line also, the same, was working fine, there was no problem. So the MWRA regularly tests their water supply, and they wouldn't let their water go anywhere if it wasn't perfect for human health.
All right, I think that's important for people to know as well. Another thing, then, this comes up, the ultimate question comes up, what could possibly be, you know, and if this is beyond your area of expertise, please don't feel as though you have to comment on it, but what could possibly be the problem in one of these three sections of pipe, if you don't, if you can speculate on that?
Well, no, the, in older water mains, a coating, over the years and years and years, in older water mains, a coating of debris begins to build up. So you could go out into any city street or any town street, and if you were to dig up a water pipe in the street, there might be a thin film of material on the inside. Older and older, sometimes the pipe diameter, you know, creeps, gets a little smaller, which over 40, 50, 60 years becomes a reason you might have poor pressure somewhere, and is sometimes a reason for replacing lines. So it's a possibility that when they took the line out of service and then re-chlorinated the line, they disturbed some of that debris, and when they've done the chlorine test, it has not allowed the chlorine residual to maintain. It's not, what's uncommon about this issue is that we've had the situation twice now where we haven't passed the test, but it's not unusual to have lines get disturbed and need to be re-chlorinated. And many times, if you have a water main break near your home, you might notice cloudy water for a little while, and they'll say, you know, "Don't use the water till it clears." And usually, within a couple hours, it clears and it's fine.
Yeah, that happens when the, when the fire department comes up and opens the...
Absolutely.
And you get rusty water.
Absolutely.
I understand that. That was my next question, whether it could be a result of the great amount of disturbance, given the long area that we're replacing.
Absolutely.
All right, so, but you're saying it's unusual in the, to the extent that after the first time, and then you did it the second time, and there's still that issue in there?
Correct, and that's why, because they are MWRA water mains, we're working closely with them on, you know, "These are your transmission mains, yes, our contractor installed 265 feet of new pipe, how do you want to handle it?" And that's why we're working with them, that's why there is an MWRA person on-site every day.
So it's not likely that there's any infiltration issue here? That would be my biggest concern.
No, the, no, not at all. Normally, in these kinds of pressure pipes, it's more an exfiltration issue. Occasionally, you have water mains that are under pressure and they would leak water out.
I see. All right, so the best guess right now, it's that this residue coming off the coating of the pipe is probably causing the problem, and there's just so much of it, it wasn't ameliorated by the chlorination.
Yeah. What they do when they superchlorinate it, they literally take a super-high dose of chlorine, literally probably five times the amount of chlorine that you would have in a Clorox bleach bottle, five times that strength, and that's put into the pipe, so what they call "superchlorinated," and they let that sit for 24 hours, and if the chlorine has anything to react with, it gets eaten up. The chlorine gets eaten up. So after 24 hours, they measure the chlorine again, and what they want to see is a residual of, I believe it's like two to five pots per million.
Closer to what they put in there than what we're getting back?
Well, no, they put in about 90 to 100 pots per million, and so they expect to see two to five left over. What we've been seeing is something between one and two. So it's very possible that the material in the pipe has kind of eaten the chlorine in... up, may not really be a problem, but the MWRA is not in the business of taking any risks relative to public health. So if somebody said, well, we still have the one or two, it's probably okay, let's let the line go, a problem pops up somewhere else in the system, further in this system, and then you're into a boil-water order. So right now, the MWRA working with us and the city is taking a conservative approach. Like I say, I, I appreciate everybody's concern, and believe me, I'm as aggravated as anyone else. This was supposed to be done by now, you know, the last thing we wanted to do was come back over here and aggravate anybody and, and stuff, but we just felt that we were prudent to reach out to the city and, and give an update as to why we are where we are.
Well, I think when you're, it's one thing when you're talking about a sewer line, it's completely different when you're talking about fresh water and, and, and the water that people drink to, to keep themselves alive, so I think it's important that, I'm glad you cleared up the issue, that right now, everything is safe, and that the point of this exercise is to make sure it stays that way.
Absolutely correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Redden. Councilor Patch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think my colleagues asked most of the questions that I had, especially Councilor Redden, when he, I was more concerned about the problem, if it existed before we even started working, um, doing this job, if it's somewhere else on the line that's causing this problem. Um, my concern is, is, the contractor's still working? I, I think I still see, like, backhoes moving and?
So the, the contractor is on the site, he's responsible to conduct the, any pressure tests, and to conduct the chlorination tests, and with the MWRA to take care of the sampling and do those, that sample testing. Once the, once the 24-inch line is resolved, the contractor will take the 16-inch line off the sidewalk, put that back into the ground, retest that line, and then the contractor will be doing some paving and sidewalk repairs, and then it'd be done. So Albany's DNS is still the contractor, they have some of their equipment on site. In advance of Little League starting this week, we had them come in and put a, a small fence barrier along the 16-inch water main on the street, so that if people had to access the park for the Little League, they would be able to do that, a little safer, just so the pipe wasn't there by itself, there's a small orange fence along the side now. And, and that's, you know, so we feel like if the baseball were to have gone on tonight or tomorrow, the weekend, it, it would have been able to occur, I was down there today and I know the field is underwater, the outfield is underwater. And, and again, in general, if Little League is using the field, the contractor will not be working when Little League is going on. The contractor right now is working about 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So, but, but like I say, he does still have some work to do.
Now, is it, uh, the expense of these contractors is still working, that money's been already appropriated, correct?
Correct. The, this work, this extra work of the contractor is not expected to be passed on to the city because the contractor's under the obligation to chlorinate, retest the line, and restore it into service. What we would end up, you know, arguing about or talking with the contractor about, again, is the extra police details and, and the like, and we may end up having to have conversations with the authority about that. But, you know, our, our position is that this should have been done, you know, a week or so ago, or, or a couple of days ago, really finished. But, but one other point to make about this emergency-type work versus a regular bid project, many times on regular bid projects, we do a lot of pre-planning, we understand all the potential pitfalls in the project, and we, we define the timeline for the work, and we have what we call liquidated damages. And the, and the damages are a fine, if you will, if the contractor is late, and that's standard on many projects. Every single project we work on in the city of Riviere and anywhere really, we stipulate liquidated damages. So if the contractor's supposed to be done in four or five months, he's charged for every day that he's late, not as a penalty, but to recoup the extra cost. Because this work was an emergency project, and because there were a certain amount of unknowns going into the work, you, you don't put those damages in there because there's too many unknowns. Were you to put those damages in there, the contractor would build the price up ahead of time because there's many unknowns. So that, so anyway, that, so that, that's kind of where we are on it, but the contractor, believe me, the contractor wants to be done.
I'm sure he does.
And the, the MWRA wants to be done. And as contractors go, Albany's DNS is what we consider one of the best contractors. So there's probably, you know, they're probably more aggravated than I am.
Right. Um, all right, I just, I just hope that it is finished before, they do have a parade coming up at the end of the, the end of the month, so, um, I wish you luck, because there's a lot of aggravated people down there in that area.
Understood.
Thank, bye.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Uh, far be it for me to defend Albany's construction, but I know that my superintendent of public works told me he thought they were the best contractor in the state. That was on the John Ave Pump Project, that my colleague, Councilor Powers, now, Councilor Powers says that we're all laypeople, that isn't true. I spent ten, 10 years in road construction, I know this project. I also know that you can't compare, as my good friend from Ward 1 tried to compare the tunnel project to this project, you don't compare a project that was laid out with complete specifications as to everything that had to be done, every inch of it was surveyed, every bit of that project was studied, everybody knew when it could be done and when it couldn't be done. When you have a sewer line that's collapsed 30 feet in the ground with two MWRA transmission lines on top of it, all bets are off. There was only guestimates as to what can be done and what you're gonna find when you open up that street.
Mr. President, point of information.
State your point.
I was very, the reason I made that statement was if, the amount of days that they're over, now, they had updates on this project, this wasn't from day one, emergency situation, so let's get that, that clear. But my comparison was, how much money would they be fined if it ever went that way?
Well.
That was the comparison. So it wasn't, it wasn't that I wanted to compare it to, it was the money cost I wanted to compare it to.
I understand, and I was, I wasn't.
But before you go any further, just remember, they did update this, on this, late in the project, not early, later in the project.
I, I understand.
So make sure you keep that in mind.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the point of information, but it doesn't change the fact that this is an emergency project without any specifications except that what MWRA dictated, that they needed to keep a transmission line open, so they had to put that transmission line on the sidewalk, and that's, that's what's pushing the water to Winthrop or wherever it's going at this point. But the bottom line is that I've been on projects that had specifications, and when they had the kind of depth that this had, they still didn't, they still weren't able to keep that schedule. So this is an emergency project, I know it's a, it's a nightmare for the neighbors, and that's the main reason for this meeting, was to notify the ma, the neighbors what went wrong. We're almost done, there's one glitch, and it's a, it's a public safety health glitch, that until that water pipe is, is cleared as, as being purified and you can drink that water safely, it's, we're not gonna close up that street, and it just can't be done. So it's, it's a two, I'm, I'm praying that, and that's one of the questions I have for you, how realistic is our best-case scenario, three or four weeks? What, how realistic? Let's, let's assume that the pipe fails again. Are we still realistically looking at three or four weeks?
My realistic expectation is the contractor will not be there anymore on or about May 9th, about one month from now.
Under, under any circumstances?
That, that's my estimate right now. My expectation is that one month from now, the contractor will be off the site, the sidewalk and, and the paving on the street will be wrapped up for several, several months, and then as all paving jobs, we allow the contractor to come back five, six months later after all the settlement occurs, and, you know, once it settles, and he read, and he does a, what we call fine the paving, and that's, that's typical of any job.
Okay, now, I have a couple of, a couple of issues. I think we've, we've pretty well-educated the public as to what's going on, why there's another delay, and I, I don't have a problem with CDM Smith. I know the work you've done in the city has been exemplary, I know how, how closely you work with the mayor on the consent decree, and, and I know the work that goes into what's being done in the city, so I'm not, I'm not here to bash anybody. I do have a few questions that people ask me, one of them is, and I, I assure them that the place will be spotless when the contractor is ready to leave the site, is that correct? Can we put that on the record here tonight?
Yes, yes, we can. But like I said, the, before the contractor leaves this site, this immediate timeframe, paving will be done, sidewalks will be restored, any, any fencing, anything that needs to be restored will be done. However, that paving that's put in is what we call temporary paving.
I understand.
And at some point, the contractor will come back and repave the whole street so it lasts forever, and when I say some point, likely to be the end of the summer.
I understand that. The other, the other thing is that I want, I want the neighbors there on, on Winthrop Ave, in the surrounding area to know they're gonna be made whole, that their property is gonna be restored to the way it was before this project started.
That, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. The other, the, the other piece is, somebody asked me, is it possible to defer the buses away from Library Street? Is there any, have we got a shot at changing that? Can we look in?
I will, I will look into that.
Okay, can we, can we see if we can get them off Library Street, because we had several, several complaints about that, and, if, if we can take that. And I guess all we can do now is hope that these pipes pass the test and we can get on with finishing this project. Councilor Powers?
I just, Mr. Doherty, I just have one question. In areas where there were concrete sidewalks, when they redo the sidewalks, are they gonna be concrete, I would hope?
Correct, they will, they will repour the same sidewalk or better in place, and there will be concrete, and they will reset any curbs they need to reset.
Thank you.
And I, I just have one, one.
Go right ahead.
One, one comment there. I, I, you know, I guess I can't apologize enough for the fact that this has been delayed. I appreciate everybody's situation that this has put people in and, and aggravated the neighbors and all. We wish it didn't happen. I would, I would just point out, though, relative to projects that CDM Smith has been involved with in the city, I would say without exception, all of our projects have come in on schedule and on budget, and even this project continues to be on budget, even though there is some additional police overtime costs to, you know, for public safety on the roadway, we still anticipate that this project will come in below the planning budget that was established and the, and the funds that the city council sought.
Great, and, and we're gonna expect you back here on the 28th of April to update us that everything's finished, cleaned up, looks nice, hopefully that will be the, the message you will be bringing back to us, but.
To update you just to where it is.
At least update us where we are, but we, I'm, I'm, I'm being very optimistic and hoping that you're gonna come back and tell us we're done at that date, so.
I hope so as well.
That's, what is that, 18 days away?
Uh.
18 days from today.
Okay, 28.
I know, that's optimistic. Okay, thank you. That concludes this informational meeting, and I want to thank everybody, all my colleagues, for coming to participate. I think we, we got all the stuff on the table here tonight, and everybody knows what's going on. Thank you.